No, I've been wanting to, I've been wanting to, but I don't know if I can handle the frustration of that.
Call the meeting to a quarter. Today we're gonna have Scoutmaster Bruce Unstra and Boy Scouts need our pledge of allegiance for it.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Scout salute hand over our heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you being here. Lori, if you would do a roll call for us?
Noah?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Lori, here.
Jeff?
Here. And we have a few excused absences tonight for various personal reasons. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next, we have the approval of past meeting minutes. We have November 8, 2021.
I move to approve November 8, 2021 regular meeting minutes as presented and placed on file.
Do we have a second?
It's four.
It's four by Lori, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have the Treasurer's report. We're going on the board. Have discussions, questions, thoughts, ideas on the report.
Yeah, I actually did have a question on it, and I'm sorry if I'm doing this, but I'm not sure if I'm reading the right line. I think I've seen it, it's in the Department 265, Family Farm and Home.
Oh, that's paid bills.
You're in paying the bills.
Oh.
First, we'll just, we're just the Treasurer's report. But we'll just put the Treasurer's report on the bottom and move on to the paying of the bills. So, what was your question about paying?
My question is, if that's a 15-piece drill set, like 406 bucks, I want to know about that one set. If I'm reading in the right line, it looked like when I put the line across, it showed that drill bit's that being 406, for 15-piece drill set?
I think it's only confilling so much.
Yeah, she, it doesn't have everything that they ordered, but that's part of it.
One of these days, I won't figure this stuff out.
Because we only have so many here, but I will, if you want, I will look into that. But I know that the drill set is not 406, trust me.
That's what I needed to know.
No, no, no.
Consider your full receipt.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Good question. Do we have a motion on the bills?
I make a motion to P, November 2nd, 2021 through December 6th, 2021 bills as presented.
Motion by Noah, do we have a support?
No support.
Support by Lee, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff? Yes, motion passes. Next, we have our Fire Department report, if you would, chief.
96 requests for service last month, again, another record-breaking month. Still, well, the whole of the eight minute, eight percent of the time worth six minutes, 23 seconds, 100% of the time. Staff has been just rocking out all day long, they're hurt and they're beaten, but they're not quitting. The new gear lockers we talked about have been ordered and are here, the last ones came in today, they're hard to put up. Phenomenal, they replaced the 26-year-old ones that were falling off the wall, so the staff is very happy with them, they're quite excited. As every, hopefully seen on the firehouse, you keep your wreath red program, which was started here in Dalton 11 years ago, which is a wreath we put up with red light bulbs in it. Anytime we respond to an incident during the holiday season that involves a decoration of some sort, we change a red bulb to white. Pretty easy to say, in 11 years, I've been here since I brought that program here, we haven't yet to change a bulb. So, let's try to end this show one more time, folks, please. If you have any questions, every day we're putting out social media, public safety tips. If you have questions, call the firehouse, we'll give you the information, if you have other questions, we'll be able to help you out in the relationship form. And I am on call tonight for a shower, just a couple, so if I gotta go, I gotta go. Lastly, as always, the squad, Jesse has arrived at the manufacturer, we did have two changers. It won't take away adding, but it'll change a little bit, but it won't change much of the number. Still on target for April, we'll be going down at some point to the manufacturer, I don't know how, when, where, who we at, but we're going down by mid-bill. For the final paperwork, I anticipate in May, and with that, we're also begun to prepare for the 2022-23 budget year. Figure out what we need to look at, we have a couple of big capital investors we're gonna need to look at besides the engine. We have an issue with the roof, but we need to look at that, so other than that, there aren't any else, unless you're ready for me?
Perfect, thank you. Lee, can we have the Fire Department report?
Yes, November 30th event, first ordinance for the set plan review for the Twin Lake Garden Club. They're looking at building a covered patio by the clubhouse, right behind the range. This is for added, added shelter for events and things like that. Motion approved for that. Next was this set plan review for, I think it's Jalen, yeah, tree service. They want to put up a fence for security and privacy, and just to clean up how it looks over there. There's also on there, it used to be automotive place, now it's a tree service place, so had to change the land use. Motion approved, and then last agenda was a draft amendment for accessory buildings. Previous meeting was brought up, they're wondering why in the zones R1, R2, and LR are over five acres, why it was limited to 3,000 square feet when the ag is 4,000 square feet. And the commission discussed and thought it was reasonable to be able to have, and just make it easier across the board, all the numbers are kind of the same. So it's 4,000 square feet, it's allowed on R1, R2, and LR over five acres. That's it.
Perfect, thank you. And Noah, if you could do the Fire Department report.
Okay, we got zoning board appeals, Ken and Marrow resigns as of 11/10/21. We discussed the need for registered mail to be certain people were notified, ordinance violation 2021-34, or enforcement case EN-21-056. This is where this place has a lot of debris on their property, I personally went out there, a neighbor spoke up, Chuck Mice, he was very upset from the debris that he has had to see from his 25-acre parcel. We have done due process, we sent out all the notifications. What we need to send registered letter to 1180 West Huron Road, the name of the landlord is reported to live in Alaska, so it's kind of hard for her to get the mail. But her husband has the property, so it's kind of hard to enforce when, if nobody that owns the property is getting the notification that there's a problem. The man I spoke to, he stated he was going to get a dumpster. Required case EN-21-066, 1824 Eastern Road, owner claims four floods, leaking pipes from upstairs, had led them to put a B dry system to resolve, but water hadn't told where to go even with the B dry system. And so it was a big setback, they had 30 days for mediation and reinspection in 30 days. They have progress is made, no need to come back to ZBA, and they were making progress, I found in that place as well. Ronaldin Gretchen Maisel of 6480 Middle Lake Road appealed zoning permit number P zoning-21-105 issued to Dan McKinnon. Steve had issued a brand-new permit, Dr. Maisel is objecting to the deck, the deck ordinance is 300 foot for a deck. Steve stated 510-foot deck is okay as long as they were not connected to each other. We rescinded the permit, however, needs to have the planning commission look at cumulative total lot coverage concerning decks. 9.5, 1, and 2 needs to be clearer for proper interpretation.
Perfect, thank you. Next, we have our first public comment section, if someone has something on the agenda that would like to comment on for three minutes.
Hey, I was just questioning, I don't know if I'm answering to any, but I'm just questioning your agenda item 17, the township meeting in closing days. I know there was a brief explanation as why you left Juneteenth out there because it's a Texas holiday, it is actually a federal holiday, and I'm wondering why we don't have that on our calendar of closed dates from this particular year. It was passed by obviously the majority in the federal level through the state level, and we should follow suit as everyone else does. So I was hoping to see that we at least take that into consideration before voting on the project. I've seen some government agencies want to maybe swap a day with another day, and you know, if you guys want to pick on veterans to do that, or you want to pick on people like Easter or Thanksgiving, go for it, but I think it should just be added to the days on. Thanks.
Good, any other public comments? Alright, we will move on to our agenda items, and the first one is Boy Scout Troop 1032, recognition, and they've been doing the project for over 25 years now. I've written up a resolution that the board will take a vote on, it includes the mission, the pledge, the oath that the Boy Scouts do. And at this time, I will let the Scoutmaster take over and explain and demonstrate a couple of those.
Alright, we could first start off with performing our scout oath in scout law, standards that not only the scouts live by, but adults in scouting live by too. Scouts, stand up, attention. Scout sign. Scout oath.
On my honor, I will do my best, do my duty, to guide my country, to obey the scout law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight.
Now we will perform the scout laws. Scout sign. A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. Two, you may be seated. When the supervisor responded to me about honoring the troop for our service that we've, one of the few service projects that we've done in the Dalton area, it was very honored. One of the things in the history of Muskegon area troops, the Twin Lake Holton troop has been always known for the extra amount of service work they've done for our community. And I've tried to carry that on with trying to do a service project of one a month, or sometimes we do two or three in a month. And so it's been a very honorable feeling that I've had, not only the scouts, but the adults with the scouting program participate in all our service work, and that's one of the very strong beliefs in scouting, is that we give back to our communities, and we serve our fellow men as much and in every way that we can. And the service projects have been just numerous, I could go on and probably name 20 or 30, but it's, we do, once or twice a year, we do food fundraising, scouting for booths. We serve at community meals. We do, obviously, we've done for over 25 years, we've done road pickup here on Riley Thompson. We've done senior yard work. Just, everything is a part of scouting, but service is the most important, so we really appreciate it, and I appreciate your, your recognition.
So, we're looking at, I have a resolution in here, but it reiterates what you were just speaking about, so I think we need to approve the whole thing. But do we have a motion on the resolution?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-38, recognizing the dedicated service of the Scout Troop 1032 to Twin Lake and Holton, support.
Any other discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes, motion passes, and Lori was kind enough to take a certificate of achievement.
Or stand up. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Pass it along, down the line. Thank you, you may be seated.
Yeah, thank the guys, seeing the lot of service, yeah. How does it, you guys all like going to 25 years?
Next, we have the addition of the Deputy Treasurer to the bank accounts, and there are four words used. The reason that we do these is because the bank likes to receive them in convenient minutes to certify that it was done. So, do we have a motion on the first?
I make the motion to add Deputy Treasurer Andrew McGann to the Choice Home Bank accounts.
Lori, the second.
Has support.
Support by Noah, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Noah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes, motion passes.
I make a motion to add Deputy Treasurer Andrew McGann to the Lake Michigan Credit Union accounts.
Do we have a second? Support by Lee, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Lee?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes.
I make a motion to add Deputy Treasurer Andrew McGann to the Muskegon Co-op Credit Union accounts.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Hearing none, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Noah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes.
I make a motion to add Deputy Treasurer Andrew McGann to the Michigan class accounts.
Support by Lee, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Lee?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have our hardship tax exemptions, and these come up on yearly basis, four being updated. The biggest thing being updated is our debates unless the state law is changed, something like that.
Some of the guidelines change a little bit, but mostly it's the dates.
Small adjustments.
Yep, small adjustments.
And approving the paperwork that we use every year.
It's the same paperwork, it's from the state of Michigan, but there are just minor adjustments that have to be made every year, that the board has to.
You know, when it talks about assets, and yeah, I'm not familiar with all these things, but like, if somebody owned a car, or they're making payments on the car, like, does that count as an asset?
Yes, it is, it's an asset.
So it works against them to even have the effort.
Well, you have to have so many assets before, I mean, you know, to have, what do you mean?
Certain criteria.
Good question.
Good question.
Do we have a motion on the hardship exemptions?
I'm going to approve the 2022 income guidelines for the hardship applications as presented.
Do we have a second? Support by Lee, any other discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call votes.
Noah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have the member for the Zone Board of Appeals, as Noah mentioned, there was a resignation there. I had one application in, which I am always accepting applications for planning commission, border review, zoning board appeals, those types of things. Applications are directly in the back there, and in this case, I've included the information from Marvin Scott Holland, he drew up a few bullet points of his life to represent here, and this is my nomination, and we have a motion.
I make a motion to approve appointment of Marvin Scott Holland to the Zone Board of Appeals, it's a four.
Support by Lori, any other?
I knew him in school, and he was a real good guy, so.
Oh, perfect. Any other discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have the planning commission member, and in this case, there are, when these terms come up at unusual times, in the case of resignations, they complete the term, which we had come up with Casey Jordan, because we had voted her not too long ago, you might remember. And so she's completed that partial term, and now she can be up for a full three-year term for the planning commission. And she's done well at being involved in material, asking questions, making comments, pleased we ran out those meetings, so we have even more familiarity with that than me. And we're looking for a motion others.
I make the motion to approve the appointment of Casey Jordan to the planning commission for three-year term.
Support by Lee, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Lee?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have the township meeting in closing days, and we heard the public comment on this. So I brought up at last board meeting that some of our crew, our lance crew, had inquired into Good Friday, which I think is a reasonable day to have off, which, which I agree, I don't think we got any objections to that, the one comment that we did get on these is that we're already at a high number. And so I looked at these, and we're basing these off the county originally, just like last year, we just took the county days. And it's, it's true that these are high compared to businesses on average, businesses average somewhere between 79 days off. Governments are higher, and that is why they give the reputation, and that's why we had that comment last month. I found governments that range all the way from 10 to 20 days off. There are, I found a government that takes an entire week off in the holiday season, which is part of how you get up to 20 official days off in a year. And so this includes 11, with 12 being paid in the year because of the way the new year goes. And there are a lot that could be added, so there was Juneteenth added at the federal level, basing it off the Texas holiday. There is Lincoln's birthday, there is Columbus Day, some people take election days off, some people take inauguration days off. So there is a lot that could potentially expand there, and I think it's reasonable to follow the the normal policy of doing the same as the county, they are the municipality that we interact with the most, and that our systems run through. And so I think it's reasonable that that's a fairly objective list to go off of, rather than adding or subtracting anything. But willing to take any other opinions from the board?
If you ask me, I would say election days off, but that's just, it takes it easier for me to do my elections, but hey.
The clerk has a lot of work on that.
Yes, election days are crazy, but no, I mean, I think we've always, pretty much, the township has always followed the county, because as you said, we interact with the county the most, and when the county's closed, we pretty much can't do a whole lot, so.
And this puts us on the high side of business, the low side of government, the days off.
And, yeah, I do understand we are high considering if you look at private business, but we're government, so we're working within other government entities, and I think pretty much all of them follow the same dates that we're following, which are what came down from the county in October.
It's perfect, I think I found, just skipping around, Michigan, I found two municipalities that do one day less than we would do, but everyone else ends up doing more, some significantly, but we have.
So with that being said, then I'm going to move to approve downtownship board and planning commission meeting dates and township all holiday closes for 2022 as presented.
Support.
Motion support, any other discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have our first resolution for Mission Linda Road, and Mission Linda Road has been, been talked about for a little while in, in meetings, and, and also online, and then the community in general. And this is, this is a start, but we have the petition that we accepted officially at a meeting previously for having paved. We have not had official paperwork adjustments since then, so as we've been through them before, this would be the first resolution. And there's three more to go after this, where we put in the specific property numbers and the specific amounts. The amounts have come in lower than I would have expected, and so that ends up being good. Part of the reason the project was partially done already this year, which that was not expected, it was going to be done next year, is because the road commission had some millions that they didn't have slated for different projects, so they were able to give us a discount on them, so I took that and figured we might as well get a good start on it, and that's, that's part of the reason that the numbers are coming in lower, which is, which is good. And so I had this officially written out, because we don't, we don't want it to be wrong, by a lawyer that specializes in these through our law firm, and this is the first resolution.
Yes, I have one thing before we go over here.
Yes.
Anybody from Mission Linda, like been more, been in contact, anybody from Mission Linda or anything about it?
A few people, so Kelly lives down there for one, she's, she's in favor in general of the voting on issues, not here to denigrate issues, appreciate a personal thing that came up. And so, and a few of the people have come in and inquired on it, and wanted more of the details and some of the numbers, and we shared some of that. And then I was able to come up with those more exact numbers, which I think included in some of the previous packets. And the guy that had originally done the work of getting the petition together, he had inquired into doing a gravel upgrade instead of doing the paving, which means he would have withdrawn his petition for the paving, and done another one to turn in for the gravel upgrade, but that did not occur, and so we still are go, have the original petition that's for the paving that has not been rescinded and is still in effect.
Nobody's objected yet, but they haven't given us any numbers yet, so.
No, we haven't sent out the initial, we haven't sent out the initial cost, which is.
This would be after this.
In Resolution 2 and 3, right, because then it gets published in the newspaper and the mail-in specifically gets sent.
This, this resolution starts the process to come through the presidents and give them the estimated cost, which is truly estimated, and then go there. And then we have public hearings, and then that's when people can come in and say yes or no.
But the numbers did come back fairly low after the road commission pays their 25%, 172,206 dollars. So, and I was promoting when they were initially looking at it, the petition was going around, but it was going to be a lot of money, going to be about a million dollars a mile, because the road commission is very hesitant to do these and follow up with them, because normally they get walked on and it becomes a political headache. So the road commission really doesn't like them being turned in, and it took months to get numbers back into us, several, several months. So, but we did, we did have the fairly numbers came back pretty decent.
So I make the motion to approve Resolution 2021-39, the first, for the West Mission Linda Road Improvement Special Assessment, this one.
Motion by Noah?
Support.
Support by Lori, any other discussion among the board? Roll call vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we are on to our discussion items, so two things here, one is school choice week proclamation, and I've been contacted about this a couple of times. And the basic idea, they include in the email that school choice week is being recognized nationally and at the state level quite a bit. It's from January 23rd to 29th, so they include a suggestive proclamation of support. That's been done by 300 mayors and county leaders, along with 27 governors, and the United States Senate has passed a proclamation in support of school choice week, and I just wanted to see if there is interest among the board on joining it, or not. If anyone has a strong opinion, or not.
I, I, I'm, I'm getting lost with it. I don't know why you have to proclaim that we have school choice when we do have school choice, correct? Don't we already have school choice?
We do.
So why is this?
Yeah, we do school choice. Well, it won't, it won't legally affect anything, and so it's, it's one of those things that is a, is a motion of, of support for it, and so that's all it is.
I know, that's right.
I just don't know.
No strong opinions either.
I mean, I know we have some points and time.
Fair enough. Yeah, I don't, I don't take a big deal, so. The next one is the Muskegon County Diversion Council, now this would actually affect us, and I talked with the sheriff about this and the prosecutor, and Alan had brought to my attention, and so the basic idea is that there are some people that have behavioral problems, they have mental health problems, they have drug problems, and they're nonviolent offenders, and they should be treated differently and put into different programs than just being incarcerated. And that's the, that's the idea with this. I also agree with the general concept, I like restorative justice, I like restitution, I like the aspects of things, especially for nonviolent offenders. I checked with prosecutor, and. I checked with prosecutor, and he said that this would not put violent offenders out on the street and fast or anything like that. Because I think that, that could be the danger of these when they become applied in reality. And he told me that would not happen. Another part of the logistics of it, and sheriff and prosecutor said it would be fairly light, but it would require training for the firefighters for the way that they're reporting, reporting things. And so I've been told that it's fairly light, but as we know, our, our fire is hitting record numbers of calls with short staff, with, with a small amount of staff. And so we don't want to put something on them that doesn't need to be put on them as well. So these are the basic considerations. And if you have an opinion or want to say anything, you are welcome to as well, chief. Any other thoughts, opinions, ideas?
I like the idea of, of them, you know, because it's, it's, it's bad when you've got people that have mental illness that end up in jail, they end up being really assaulted by inmates. And we've had three deaths in our jail in Muskegon County in the last three years.
Right.
You know, so it's, it's good to know that, but I, I agree on the same portion. The fire staff is already far stretched. So I'm like, wow, what do you do? What do you do? What do you do, Chief Stiles? What do you do?
Boy, we'll be just fine. I'm not going to enter an MOU with the county government unless I have to approve it, the board.
Right.
I'm perfectly fine with it. It's not going to affect us in any way, shape, or form. We're going to continue to do business, we've got business. This really is more of a law enforcement thing. It came to us, chiefs, we were, we're at the program as a whole, of answers to sign MOUs, and all this group has to come back to you folks, sort it before we decide to enter again MOUs. And all it's saying is that if they were to request any information, we obviously through the FOIA process or subpoenas, which we do all the time, that's easy. It's literally probably 10 minutes of my life, and I don't think it's going to be that much.
Okay.
Yes, it'll be minimal, but I'm just, I'm not going to sign through an MOU unless you guys approve it.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Yeah, okay.
Other than that, it doesn't be, it doesn't truly affect us, obviously, far reaching besides the medical pathologies of some folks, it's, it's everything. I mean, we've got adult protective services, we've got everything that we're, we're struggling with, with folks, and it's just another same soup, different bowl today. It's how we play. It's going to keep going along, and we'll do what we have to do as right for the citizens, but I mean, most of us as chiefs have no problem entering this, just that I'm not going to sign something unless my board says it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other than that, I have no concerns.
Thank you.
Then we can bring it for a board vote next.
I think we probably should come back to the board.
Yes, we'll bring it for a board vote next month. If anyone, if anyone on the board finds out information, any concerns, any issues as well, and they want to express them with me, feel free to. All right, we are on to our second public comment. And I did write a note to myself to mention, which was requested, that we are officially a Toys for Tots drop-off location. There's a box out in the hall if anyone becomes interested in that, it will be available there. And if anyone would like to do a public comment, welcome to come up to the lecture.
Just a quick question. I don't know whether the board knows any information. Is there any timeline or any information on the upgrade of the railroad crossing as April? It's been talked about for like six years.
Yeah.
And it's just got to the point that I don't know how we can get involved and get it addressed, or has it been addressed?
Well, it's difficult. So in, in railroad, of course, following the special laws and all of this type of stuff. So when I first got in, I had inquired with the railroad associations at the state level, and that filtered down, and a discussion occurred at several different levels if something could be done with that. It ended up dissipating out and nothing occurred at that point. I also talked with road commission about it. And so what I was told about road commission is that the railroad, to a certain extent, can trump them on the paperwork that they file. And so if they file certain paperwork, they can limit what the road commission can do. But the road commission also has a process for doing railroad tracks and those types of things, and they are working on that. I tried not to come out with it because I, I don't have a certainty that it's going to be done. But hopefully, the road commission can initiate and do the project next year. Now, whether that will actually happen or not, I have no way of enforcing or guaranteeing. But that, that is what I'm hoping. And that is what is supposed to occur.
Because it's always getting to the point it's unsafe.
Yeah, it's a big bug.
And so I just was wondering, so it's in the road commission's hands right now?
As far as I can tell, as far as they're concerned, yes. Apparently, the railroad can also do things that would take it out of their hands, but as of right now, they have not. So hopefully, the road commission can do it next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good, good question.